Welcome one, welcome all to our informal session today. It's a little hot out there, but here we are in here. Okay, at this point, we're going to start off with Brad Martin on the Process Improvement Steering Committee update. Welcome Brad.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Mrs. Vice Mayor, members of council, City Manager Duhany. My name is Brad Martin and I've lived in Bay Lake Pines off of Shore Drive for over 20 years with my wife Tracy and our son Henry. I'm here today in my capacity as the current Chair of your Process Improvement Steering Committee, and we appreciate the opportunity to introduce ourselves to the new members on council and reintroduce ourselves to you more seasoned members. The Process Improvement Steering Committee has its beginnings about 12 or 13 years ago, and we got our start where a lot of other good things come from, back by the grill at the Route 58 deli. Then Councilman Bobby Dyer met individually and in groups with business leaders and community leaders like Dan Brockwell of HBA Architects, Preston Midget of Jungle Golf, the city's former planning director Bob Scott, and David Browning of the Imperial Palace Restaurant. Times were pretty good for our city in 2010. We had recently weathered the 2007 downturn, but there was an awareness that the economy could surely turn sour again, and the original conversations around the formulation of this committee were discussions about how the city functions could be executed more efficiently to serve our citizens more effectively. A few of our current council members are here today, including on the front row there, Larry Dodolo, who actually was my Little League baseball coach way back when, Clinise Platt, Dr. Ross Hammond, thank you so much for recommending Clinise for membership to our organization. And I want to specifically mention Tuck Bowie there in the second row, who agreed to serve as our Chair for the first six months of our committee as we got our feet under us, and he ended up serving our city as the Chair of our committee for 11 years of our work. I also want to commend our city's staff advisors, Assistant City Manager Monica Crossky Chaparro, and our jack-of-all-trades in the front row there, Secretary Jill Wright, as well as our council liaisons, Mayor Dyer and Council Showman. In addition to the members I've mentioned, throughout the time of our service, other Virginia Beach leaders have served on the committee, including Tony DiSilvestro of Why Not Pizza, Karen Eagle, who owned the bridal shop at Hilltop where my wife bought her wedding dress 25 years ago, and Council Lady Sabrina Wooton. Council has recently expanded our membership from eight to 11 members, and we actually have one vacant seat on the committee. So if you know a candidate who'd be willing to serve, I probably don't have to remind you to encourage them to fill out a talent bank application. Our committee's marching orders have traditionally come from you, our council, where there have been issues and opportunities where some outsourced, objective research could lead to some understanding. Born out of Mayor Dyer's public policy classrooms at Regent University and under a mantra of constant improvement, our committee has convened specific subject matter subcommittees and workgroups to study individual issues. We are in a very consequential time for our city, and what you and your executive staff do is important, and we are all invested in the city's 18,000 employees, serving our citizens as effectively as possible. The Process Improvement Committee is here to help. In the past, one of our first projects had to do with the city's payroll system and the timing of paychecks, where employees turned in timesheets and were getting paid before the work week was complete. This led to 60,000 to 80,000 transactions every single year, where due to unexpected absences or overtimes, timesheets had to be retroactively adjusted and paychecks reconciled. PISC suggested that transition that was minimally impactful to employees, where you all shifted the pay schedule one day later per pay period, and in six months you had transitioned to payment in arrears instead of in advance, and all those extra 60,000 transactions went away. We worked with the city's inspectors, who were responsible for the fats, oils, and grease regulations for restaurants, and we determined that the stakeholders' outreach list for that group was missing a big part of the local restaurant community. We've had an ongoing subcommittee which is continuously monitoring the barriers to small business development and expansion in our city, whether they be permits and allowances for food trucks, the payment processes for annual fees and taxes, incentives to some businesses but not others, or just navigating the service window downstairs for business licensure and other regulatory requirements. More recently, just in April, the committee discussed the COVID-era policy of the Planning Department, closing the customer service counter every day for lunch hour due to personnel shortages and other issues. To their credit, your planning director and her staff reworked schedules and logistics on the 1st of June this year, opening the counter back up every day through lunch. Our committee members are proud of the work we have done in the past, but there's lots to do in the future as well. Mind you, not everything is in our wheelhouse. You are considering a significant change to the city's voting system this afternoon, not to mention a little project down at the oceanfront. You heard a comprehensive presentation on our city's challenge with affordable housing and workforce housing last week. We are hopeful that the stormwater workforce we began discussing with you at your retreat in January can be convened, and then outreach program introduced to produce positive engagements while protecting our citizens from future flooding damage. We are impressed with the significant steps you and your predecessors have supported in hiring procedures, especially the police department's out-of-state marketing program, pay scales, and retention efforts to address the city's recent historic employment vacancies, and we stand ready to collaborate on future improvements. We look to the future and whether it's the process by which the city funds annual grant applications, consideration of trash recycling options, or investigating better service outcomes through the city's VB Works app or call center response times, we are excited to assist you in your service to our city and to our citizens. And I will just end on a personal note. You all know of my former political service here and my, I'll say, former political aspirations. I want to tell you how wonderful it is to live and serve in a city where there are so many opportunities, not just for volunteerism, we hear about that all the time, but for citizens and residents and business owners to actually speak up and make a difference. And we feel like that's what we're doing. It is incredibly valuable as a resident of this city to have that impactful ability to make change happen. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to be of service to you. I want to thank you on behalf of our committee for the opportunity to serve, and I'll certainly stand ready to answer any questions you may have about what we have done in the past and what we may do in the future.
Any questions or concerns?
You all probably have the one-sheet primer we handed out, or front and back, or two sheets. This is just a little synopsis, as hard as it was to convene everything we've done and everything we feel like we've contributed in the past 12 years, but that's our current roster. We do have an open seat on the committee, and we appreciate the opportunity to be of service like we have been and look forward to doing more.
Josh?
Brad, thank you to you and your committee and our committee. I'm very proud to serve along with the mayor as a co-liaison to the Process Improvement Steering Committee, and I know we've got several members in attendance, so if you wouldn't mind just standing and recognizing, so we can recognize you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
From my observations, a really well-attended group. People show up, they offer really meaningful input, and I think they have an ability to be nimble in a way, where if we've got an issue that we want to refer to them, I think there would be a really good opportunity for them to provide some meaningful input, analysis, and recommendations for us. So thank you very much for being here, Brad, and thank you to the work of the committee and our staff as well.
Chris?
Thanks, Mayor Doc. Mr. Martin? As it relates to the goals and objectives for the coming year, I just want to say I look forward to working, hopefully the body working with you as it relates to the waste management and public works, customer service. We've had a lot of citizen concerns about that, so that's very good. And then I just wanted to commend this committee on the attendance. We've been discussing kind of the boards and commissions committees, and it appears that the majority of your members have made it to 90% of the meetings, and that does show a commitment, so thank you.
That's really the truth, and you, sorry, Councilman Taylor, you mentioned the VB Works and the Public Works, customer service. That may just be a difficulty in communication. You all had the See Click Fix app on your phone where you could stand over a pothole and take a picture of it, and it knew where you were, and it sent it right to Public Works. That whole app has switched to something now called VB Works, and it may just be an issue of not getting the word out there.
Amelia?
I just want to say thank you, Brad, because he's a leader, what you call like a servant leader, not only as a Chair, but you will find him, even though he's been on council before, out volunteering in many capacities. He even went with us to Charleston.
That's right.
So thank you all for what you do.
And I just want to say thank you for many people's ongoing service. You know, we started off with a little bit of pushback, but we proved ourselves over time, and it really turned out well. The payroll arrears problem was something the city wrestled with for a long time, but once we had, and the whole idea of this was to get an outside set of eyes to take a look at our city processes and see where we can find improvement. And you know, there was a wonderful white paper that was generated on that, and then also there was another one, was a good critical analysis on the Planning Department, you know, looking at the barriers to success, and after that, we, as a result, they had pre-submitting meetings and some other things that constantly looked at. It took a look at the, at the time, Economic Development's website and said, well, there's some areas for improvement here. And then even going on, you know, trying to help alleviate some of the things that, you know, we have identified affordable housing as a thing. What are the barriers that we might be able to remove, you know, that would really benefit, not the contractor, but the people buying their homes and, you know, things of that nature. So once again, I applaud everybody. I remember when Tuck Bowie agreed to be the Chair for six months, and then he became the Pope of Process and just hung around there for a long time. But there has been a remarkable continuity, you know, with the people that have served, and everybody had a servant's heart that really wanted to get together and say, what could we do to make this? If I remember, Monica, a couple of years ago, you did an analysis on the pay things that helped us eventually get to a pay system that, you know, really benefited the city in a fine way by giving objective analysis of what the problems were. But once again, you know, having our people come to the table with their outside set of eyes, recommendations, and, you know, give us food for thought as a council. Sincere thanks.
We are all about collaboration, and you mentioned like workforce housing, affordable housing issue. You all have the great consultants on that. Monica, are they from South Carolina is where they're from?
They're not, but they know Carolina is great.
Okay, that's what I thought. But there may be some collaboration that we can help with, where we're working with some home builders or home buyers or other folks in the area who do work in Suffolk, who do work in Chesapeake. We're never ashamed to steal great practices from other cities, and you get in the microcosm of the city of Virginia Beach, and sometimes you just don't look outside, and it, I mean, we stole that pre-submitting meeting idea from the city of Suffolk, and it's been a great idea, and the Planning Department is using it flawlessly. So thank you for that.
Once again, sincere thanks to all. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Duhany?
Mayor, members of council, at this time Kathy Warren, Director of Planning, will come to present to the city council to have a dialogue regarding next steps for Rudy Loop parcel.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Duhany. As the manager just said, I'm here to bring Rudy Loop back to you, give you an update on where we've been, where we are, where we would like you to tell us to go. And I'll start by just giving you an overview of what we're going to present today. First, we'll talk about the background. Secondly, we will talk about the 2022 Rudy Loop RFII process. That was a request for ideas, for information and ideas. Third, we will talk about the winter-spring 2023 community engagement feedback summary. And then fourth, and most importantly, we're going to put the potential redevelopment options in front of you, the associated next steps, and then seek direction from you. So the background, Rudy Loop, as you all probably know, this is an eight-acre peninsula located adjacent to Rudy Inlet. This is an assemblage of former businesses and a street network, and is currently being used primarily for surface parking at this time. The city desires to transform Rudy Loop into a unique development with an emphasis on open space. It's currently zoned OR, which allows for mixed-use development and a variety of building types. The 2030 Resort Area Strategic Action Plan, or RASAP, recommended additional investigation and citizen input before decisions are made concerning the future of this site. So recap of the 2022 RFII process. The city and VBDA issued a request for information and ideas, RFII, in May of 2022. Proposals were solicited for how the parcels might be developed with an emphasis on open space that attracts residents and visitors and supports surfing, fishing, and outdoor recreation. After the four responses were received, city council requested public engagement to provide residents and stakeholders an opportunity to review and provide comments on the proposals. So this is just a quick recap of the proposals we received. A was a proposal of retail restaurants, hotels, condominiums, apartments, a parking garage, and a four-acre site park. This was submitted to us from Bruce Smith Enterprises Madison Marquette Development Team and Armada Hoffler. Option B, this was from the Virginia Gentleman, and this proposal included open space with a garage, surf museum, and concessions. Exhibit C was submitted by Gold Key PHR. This included open space with a garage and retail, common space, and multifamily. And then D, this was a concept submitted by our own Department of Virginia Beach Parks and Recreation of what a park could look like on this site. So on to the community engagement survey. In the winter of 2023, city staff contracted with Work Program Architects, WPA, to conduct the community engagement and engage the residents citywide through one, an online survey that was taken by 4,269 participants. They held over a dozen one-on-one stakeholder interviews with resort area neighborhood associations, businesses, city departments, and trade and business associations. And then they held two publicly advertised open houses attended by over 180 residents. From the community engagement process, you will see here, the big takeaway on this slide is that 64% of those responding were in support of Proposal D, which was a signature park or open space. That was the proposal that was, or the concept submitted by Virginia Beach Parks and Recreation. Other key takeaways from our community engagement, overwhelmingly, there was a preference for open and green space preservation and expansion, the ability to preserve access to the southernmost point of Rudy Inlet, and open view sheds is paramount. And then consensus that parking needs to be improved, but there wasn't quite a preference for a garage versus surface. So this is just to remind you of the site and the acreage. All of the yellow that you see in this exhibit is city-owned. The center portion, which is a pinkish color, that is owned by VBDA. The city owns 5.7 acres, and VBDA owns half an acre. This does not include all of the roadway that is included in this exhibit, which would get us to, I believe, approximately nine acres, eight acres, eight to nine acres. So here are the potential park development options for consideration. One, a park with surface and/or structured parking. Two, a park with surface and structured parking, food and beverage, retail sales, and potentially a surf museum. Three, a park with surface and structured parking, food and beverage, retail services, and multifamily wrapping the upper floors of the structured parking garage. And then of course, number four, other options as directed by city council. So as pictures speak a thousand words, we wanted to put these, what we just showed you, into diagrams here to walk you through. So this again is the site, and this would show what park space, what could be developed as park space with just surface parking. This is option what we're calling 1A. Option 1B, this shows a park with surface, as you'll see right there on the ocean front, closest to the ocean front, and structured parking, which is a portion of the VBDA land and the public surface parking lot that exists today. Option two, this is the park with surface parking, structured parking, and then the ground floor, as you'll see in the pink there, is food and beverage and retail services. And this was also the option where potentially there could be a surf museum included on the ground floor. And then option three, park with surface and structured parking, food and beverage, retail, and then the yellow here is the multifamily wrapping the garage. So some things to consider cost-wise. One, the estimate to develop an iconic signature park is approximately $40 million. And 1.1 million would be required annually for operations and maintenance of the park, and this is exclusive of what it would cost to operate and maintain a parking structure. Two, parking garages are currently estimated, as you all know, to cost for construction about $30,000 to $40,000 per space for construction. Three, the source of funds for park and garage operations can be considered at a later date once we decide the direction we're going, and you could do this with the possibility of setting up a conservancy model, which we can provide more detail down the road for you. Four, revenues produced from any development with the garage could be dedicated to the operations and maintenance of a park if council desires to do so. And then five, a parking garage can become a part of an overall resort parking portfolio, and the O and M could be paid for out of our Parking Enterprise Fund. So our next steps for consideration and where we're looking for direction, one, we need to decide the scope of the project. So of the options we showed today, 1A, is it just park with surface parking? 1B, is it park with surface and structured parking and potentially some concessions or a surf museum on the ground floor? Two, is it more than that as far as a park and then multifamily associated with that parking deck? Two, do we continue the RFII process and issue an RFP with just the current respondents of the RFII? Those were the four that I showed you in previous slides. Three, do we cancel the RFII process and issue a new open RFP? Four, we could move forward with a bifurcated procurement process. The Department of Parks and Recreation could issue an RFP for the park design, and VBDA could issue an RFP for garage design. Five, city could convey additional land to VBDA to issue an RFP for the garage development, which would allow for a longer land lease period, but would require a supermajority vote. And then six, any conveyance of land from city to another entity would require a supermajority vote. So with that, and I know we've provided you a lot of information today, that's where we wanted to offer discussion.
Open for discussion, Rose, Mayor.
You know, tonight we're getting ready to talk about the voting process for the 10-1 system, and the reason I bring that up is we did a survey for that, where we wanted to go out to the people and find out what the people thought about it, and 81% said that they wanted a 10-1, and I understand that. We also went out to the people for this, and it was even more overwhelming. It was 89% wanted a park. They did not want residential, they did not want hotels, they wanted a park. I live within walking distance, this is my district, I hear from the people down there. I talked to a group just Saturday morning who are, their building is on the maps that you see on there, 401 Atlantic, and they really want a park. And I know that's not how this all started out, when we started buying the old White House at the beginning. It was always meant to be an economic development project, but you know, as we've seen in all of our lives, and as we've seen in changes of the city, which Jennifer so beautifully talked about the other day, that things, the city's changed, this has changed. And it has really become more of, the people would like to have a beautiful park, and I see it as a people's park, that this, we have purchased these with taxpayers, with dollars over the years, all these parcels, and assembled them, and it really kind of, I think it belongs to them, and they have spoken, they have told us, 89%, what, who can say 89% on anything, that it should be a park. Now, I think we all know this is particularly tricky, because if we try to turn it over to another organization or company to develop, it's going to require a supermajority vote of nine of us. And from watching all of this over the last few years, I don't know that we can get a supermajority. I don't know that nine of us could agree on one, I don't think there's any one particular one that's so extraordinary that we would all, that nine of us would agree on it. I like the Virginia Gentleman plan because they would go raise a substantial amount of money, and they could have something so that we could keep the homeless out, but hopefully we can deal with that in a different way. So I think the only way, and we're really ready to move forward, and this has been lingering on for years and years, you know, is it, and it looks terrible. I mean, it's the most extraordinary parcel on the east coast that's vacant, and it looks terrible, and it's got broken concrete. I have tripped it on the smaller down there, you know, because it's just so bad. And I think we deserve better, our citizens deserve better, and our visitors deserve better. I think the, probably the only way you can probably garner enough votes to move forward is the Parks and Rec plan. And then that still gives us a lot of control over it to be able to move forward with what Parks and Rec would like us to do, or what we'd like Parks and Rec to do. And Parks and Rec also has a foundation, and I think we could utilize that foundation and then expand it to create a fundraising mechanism. We did the Sandler Center dot wood. When we did the Sandler Center, Dotwood and Lambwood Ranch worked together, they raised $35 million for the Sandler. Now, I think there's enough people who would love to see this as a park. I think we could raise some significant dollars to help make it the iconic park that our city deserves. Every great city has a great park. So we could utilize the foundation to help raise the funds to help do that. We need a mechanism to keep out the homeless because we want everybody to feel safe down the, down there. I do think we need a place to park. I'm not really, really make a decision quite on that yet, but we have to have a decision on that. And if we do a parking garage, and I will tell you that people at 401 Atlantic are very concerned, they don't want it too tall because it messes up their view, how that they've had for, since that building was built in 1984. So we need to take a lot of things into consideration. But Mr. Duhany has talked about having a restaurant on top of there, which would be a big draw. Can you imagine the view up there? It would be incredible. Of course, they have to have seafood. So it would be a great place to have events on top of there for, you know, bringing in companies that we want to do for economic development, or to have a wedding, or things that can be utilized. So I think it needs an iconic parking garage that's really, really special. And I also think we, we should also not take the schooner totally out of the picture yet. When you look at that map up there, the schooner, having that would make it even better than an iconic park. And so it hasn't been sold to anybody else yet that I know of, so that could possibly still be part of the picture. They've sort of withdrawn because they got tired of waiting for us, and I don't blame them. We dragged our feet and dragged our feet. So I think we need to hire someone nationwide to help design it so that it really is a wonderful, wonderful thing. And I believe that it would be a big draw for more tourists to come, so we'll have more visitors, and also, most important, people that live in District 10, District 1, District 9, District 2, District 7, District 4, all the districts are going to want to come, but they have to have a place to park. So that's kind of what I've been thinking about on this. I would like to see children have a splash park, because I'm all about the kids. So I could, Josh, I could see your kids coming down to play, and Chris, I could see your kids coming down to play. So those are some of my thoughts, and I'm really anxious to hear what the rest of you are thinking.
Chris?
Good morning, thank you for the presentation. I'm just going to kind of follow your, the next steps for consideration. So deciding the scope of the project. Not sure how we came up with the options, but in reviewing the survey, I know the stakeholders and I'll, my opinion is that, that group was fairly limited. But I didn't see anywhere where the public outside of that stakeholder group and the summary wanted a surf museum, so I'm not sure why that was included in our options. Number two, continue RFI process and issue with RFP. Again, these are just District 8 positions. We've had some conversations, discussions between some of the respondents, and I believe those waters are muddied. And so anything going forward, I think should be, we should cancel this RFII process and issue a new open one that hasn't been unduly influenced. When you look at the park design, to my knowledge, outside of partnership or collaboration with the YMCA, not many of these respondents have, are experts in building what we're asking for, the public asked. Parking garage, 1,631 people say no to a parking garage, but we also had 1,200 people that say they need more parking. And then absolutely majority didn't want a hotel or resort, an additional one, and then residential, 59%. And there was 38% with the restaurant retail. When you look at, I'm not, if you could provide a little bit more context, I'm not sure. The 4B, with such little property, the VBDA, if you could just give me some understanding why we would issue RFP through them versus just collective as the parks and rec.
So that all has to do with a lease issue down the road? We can do a longer lease if VBDA... If I can go back just real quick. I got it, Emily, thanks. So the pink area here, that would be part of where we would construct a garage, but in order to construct a garage with the number of spaces that we would propose, you need the yellow space right behind it that's closest to Rudy Loop. So that would be the site that we would suggest. City council may want to consider conveying that .9 acre site to combine it with the pink to get that garage. And then if VBDA ended up issuing an RFP, IFB, for a garage to be constructed, and we ended up leasing some of that, if we develop around it, there can be a longer land lease on that with the VBDA acting as the, the RFP.
Thank you. So that leads to, and it's already been public, on April 21st, we all received a letter from a developer that has a private piece of property in between .3 and .9.
Correct.
And because of some undue influence and concerning situations, we didn't give that any serious consideration. There's an article in the pilot, if anyone wants to look, but we have, for the public's transparency, we have received a proposal from a private landowner that offered to build parking spaces, to purchase that .03 at market rate with, I don't believe, any city contribution, and then lease those spaces back. We haven't dealt with that. So that is a concern. So I had an X, an X to five. And then on the back, again, I'm not sure why number two or number three are options, it just really isn't aligned with the survey. I don't think anyone wants retail or multifamily wrapping around the garage, so I'm not sure why that was an option. But if, I would love to see this RFII canceled. I think it's, there's no way, as Vice Mayor said, she finds it nearly impossible for us to get to nine on an idea. Well, I don't think it would be fair to any of these respondents with what's gone on publicly and privately, to not just cancel it and start from scratch. And I believe our Parks and Rec is fully capable, with our support, to, to move forward. So thank you, those are my comments.
Okay, anybody else here to this point? Rock?
Sir. So while council debates this, Madam Vice Mayor says every, every great city needs a great park, and we have a nice one over in District 1 at Woodstock Skate Park, a real nice park. So that skate park stays busy over there. So the amenities we put at this Rudy Park needs to mix all of our cities', all of, all of our cities' parks' operations in. And I agree with Chris, I mean, we need to have a big look at it because, you know, I could, I could envision pickleball courts out there at some point. This is becoming such a popular game, so I think that we need to get the experts nationally to come in and look at it and see what, what makes it a great park and what the, what the citizens want. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Work?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I concur with, I think, what folks are saying around the table, it's going to be very hard for this body to get the nine votes, and so I very much believe what I think has been said, that Parks and Rec is fully capable of adding to our existing, I think Mount Trashmore Park is a fantastic park, so this is, let's make this the best we can be, that it won't be our best per se because we want to rank them. But I also like the idea of a conservancy, I think we should look into that for a variety of reasons, fundraising, control of the park, look forward to the city manager's input on, on that. But I think we should go to our Parks and Rec and also recommend that we, Parks and Rec hire a national renowned consultant, park design consultant, to make this the best it can be. And we should have parking garage because the public needs a place to park, surfers need a place to park. So that's my comments, thank you.
Okay, Josh and Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Kathy, for the presentation. I concur with some, most of what's been said by my colleagues today, and I mean, I, I think, you know, we, I don't want to speak for all of us, but I know a lot of us, I'm sure, want a park, just like the public does. And, and I think we just got to be comfortable with how we're going to pay for that. And, and if, if a garage is to be built, obviously we can use some of the revenue from the garage itself. I do like the idea of amenities on a rooftop to, to help maybe further, you know, service some of the, you know, the amounts that are, that are going to be necessary to, to build out the park. I agree that we should get, and probably through Parks and Rec, an internationally or nationally renowned firm to design a park, and perhaps, you know, whether or not it makes sense for us to include the schooner as a concept, and whether it doesn't. And, you know, I, I also really think that we should preserve the waterfront areas of Rudy Loop as best as we possibly can, you know, seeing, I think, some of the surface parking and the roadway areas and the, and the Parks and Rec rendering. I, I'm sure that'll get kind of cycled through, but I, I really think we need to rethink that and make sure people can, can access the waterfront and we maximize, maximize the waterfront property to the best of our ability. And then just a quick question or follow-up on the, on the VBDA issue. By longer lease term, in that, in my mind, that means longer amortization term, right? So it makes it a little easier to, to kind of bite off a big, a big project like this and pay it over a longer term as opposed to, if the city does it and there's a shorter term on the lease, then we have to, we'd have to pay quicker. Is that, is that right?
Primarily if there is to be, like, some kind of development with the parking garage. For example, if there's supposed to be, like, commercial, retail, restaurant, or some other kind of development, or wraparound with multifamily, if that's a desire of this body, then the VBDA has longer terms that they can make available to a developer that could allow them to amortize the debt over a longer period of time and increase the likelihood of greater ability to get it financed. Mark is that accurate?
Thank you. Hey, Michael?
Well, this is the best conversation about Rudy Loop that I can recall because it sounds to me like there's some consensus building around the city developing this space as a park. I think there are some matters to be resolved that Mr. Taylor alluded to, to at least one of them, but I'm hearing consensus around a model where the city develops the space as a park, and not just any park. We do have great parks, and Mount Trashmore is one of the best. But if I consider it the best, that's District 3, Mayor. And it is an extraordinary, very special park, and we'll learn more about that in the coming weeks. But this space has always been referred to during conversations I've been involved with as one of the most valuable pieces of real estate on the east coast. And I believe that to be true, not for its financial value and development potential, but because it's such a special piece of property in the way that it's situated on the Rudy Inlet and the coast, and as a kind of a bookend to the Virginia Beach Resort, which is a really special place. So I think the development of this must be, we must advance with an eye toward quality, toward innovation, toward a space that reflects the greatness of the city. We have to find a way that, as Mr. Schulman said, that we're comfortable with how to pay for that, and I think there are ways to explore that. But this is not a tourist amenity. This is a place for Virginia Beach residents to enjoy their Virginia Beach Resort and Oceanfront. And I think it's, presents a lot of really exciting potential and will be a place that residents and visitors will enjoy over the entire year. And I, and I just, I'm so pleased by what I'm hearing about that we're moving forward in just that exact direction, a really high-quality, really special place with some potentially parking amenities and some creative ones. And I, I'm seeing kind of the community come together around this, and that's what I'm hearing today, which is why I'm, I'm really encouraged by this conversation.
Okay, Amelia?
I agree about the 89% about the park, our whole theme of family-oriented along the oceanfront. That brings this, you know, into context. So Kathy, thank you for your presentation. Does that sound that we're, at least a few of us are leaning more towards next steps four? Look to see what next step four is.
So for A, issue an RFP for park design driven by the Department of Parks and Rec, that's what I'm hearing.
Yes, that's what it sounds like to me.
Okay.
I'm just, you know, reiterating that. That seems to be our direction, plus that amenity sounded nice with the view and families. Yes, Michael, Councilman?
My granddaughter enjoyed her first run all the way up to Nashville, and she's still talking about it. Thank you.
Hey, Barbara, do you have something?
Well, yes, I have heard this conversation before, I think about 10 years ago or so, when the council at that time was at a retreat and we were talking about the projects that we were doing, and, and those expressions that the Rudy property was spectacular and not like anything else on the east coast, and that anything that was to be done there was to be very, very special. And the council at that time expressed the fact that we had too many other things going on at that time, and that wasn't the time to do anything. But when the right time came and we saw the right thing, we would know it. So maybe now is more like the time that we might be ready to do something with it. But I think that the whole reason that this property has been set aside all this time is because past councils in acquiring this property recognized that this was an extraordinary location and was a very special place and needed to have a very special treatment for what was to be done. I, I've heard, I didn't attend the sessions, but in people talking about Rudy, as I have heard from all over the city, I think it's pretty strong opinion that the area needs to, to not be developed in a fashion like the rest of the oceanfront is, but it's to be something very, very special for the people, in open space and a park. How we arrive at that, you know, I'm certainly open to, but I think, like I say, this notion that this is a special place, very special attention, has been what council has expressed over and over.
Okay, anybody? Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, so just to kind of recap what, what I'm hearing, it sounds like council's interested in moving forward with a version of four, and not necessarily, and we don't need a commitment today because we can work this out as part of the process about how to handle design garage or who handles the garage, whether VBDA or the city or some other means. But it sounds like council's showing significant interest towards possibly doing some kind of a RFP process with the Parks and Rec Department to initiate some kind of design process. And just want to kind of confirm if, if that's kind of where you all are leaning towards, because the next question I want to ask is, how do we want to go about that in terms of a timeline, or is it something that you want us to take as part as the budget or to do prior to the budget and start, as far as initiating that process? You know, so just first, is council leaning towards moving with some version of four, you know, RFP with parks and design?
I think I heard, just not just the design process...
I think I heard just not just the design process, like, national first-class park planner to come in.
And I think that would be the design process, right? So I think council would, if council desired, council would authorize us to enter into a process where we would solicit some national design firm. And before we enter into a contract with them, we'll provide you information about the qualifications and profile of that firm, so you all can weigh in on that process as well. And then that could be the national design firm that could lead this process. And then they can probably kick off initial stages of design to give you their best input of what the project could look like, rough order of magnitude, cost, and also possible locations, where optimal locations of garage and what other amenities can be there. And then council can make some of those other policy decisions later at that time.
This has sort of been lingering for quite some time, so I'd say let's get on with it. Let's talk, moving, because it's, I mean, this is really taking a long time to get to this point.
Okay, Chris, and then Josh.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I'm not sure how comfortable the body is, but I think the other, the last one was "or other." So I would love an opportunity during our upcoming retreat collectively to discuss some of the things each of us would love to see prior. So that way, by the time the consultant comes in, we actually have had a discussion versus them coming in, telling us what they see, and then we trying to come back together. And then also, I didn't hear you mention, but I think we need to deal with number three, which is, are we going to cancel the RFI process and issue a new? I do see on number four A, issue RFP for the parking design driven by the department. Is that RFP going to these respondents, or is it going to be a fresh slate?
I think if you do four, you gotta, you blow up the whole RFI process and start all over. And then only people who would respond to the version of four would be capable design firms that are, would experience and can demonstrate qualification experience in designing and developing a park. And to your initial point, Councilmember Taylor, that input will be well received from staff. And we can probably get that in multiple different ways. The retreat is a key point as well, but before we issue any kind of RFQ or RFP process, we can send that to council so you all could weigh in as well. And then even as part of the design process, the consideration would be that council would chime in as part of that process as well. Thank you.
Okay, Josh.
Would it be possible, and would you all entertain perhaps a little bit more of a drill down on whether and how the VBDA might be a helpful kind of tool in some of this? And then we can, you know, we can all decide whether or not, you know, that a combination of four or five makes sense. And if it doesn't, then it doesn't. But I wouldn't want to forgo an opportunity, and then perhaps we can kind of demystify it a little bit for the public, too.
Councilmember Schul, I think that could be part of the process. I think if you start with the design, and part of the design would be where it would be best from aesthetic and efficiency purpose to put a parking garage. And they could probably give you options on what other kind of amenities can be there. And as part of that as well, council could then have that conversation in a more detailed fashion. If that's something that they want to do, how best to do it and how best for the market to deliver it. And then that's where we can have those conversations and decisions about to use the VBDA for a minor portion of the project to build out a parking garage and/or any other ancillary-like development that may benefit the park.
All right, anyone else?
Okay, if I could, you know, chime in, you know, obviously, this is a very valuable piece of property. And the disposition of it over decades, you know, has been an unknown. I think we have an opportunity to hear possible the best of all worlds. And Rocky, I agree with you 100%. I think, you know, we have an action park right at Woodstock. You know, this is a perfect place for kids to come. And if you look at the energy between a sports center, you go down to the convention, the vibe, Atlantic Park were to serve park, and then have something down there, it's good. And the thing is, I think we can build a garage and still have adequate, you know, green space. I think that was demonstrated up there. But the other thing is, too, I heard a couple of concerns that I concur with, that if we can find some blend of activities in there to help support the finance of the garage, I think that would be optimal. And I think we have to be open-minded. We do have a property owner there that maybe have a suggestion. I think anybody that has a suggestion should have the opportunity to pitch it. And, you know, so we can weigh it out, whether it be retail or a restaurant on top or, you know, some space there. But I think anybody, you know, that, you know, concurs that if they come up with an idea, they should have the opportunity to at least pitch it to council. Granted, it's a high threshold of a super majority, but, you know, I think everybody has the opportunity, should have the opportunity to be at least heard. And that way, we can put that into the consultant's toolkit about, and then, you know, figure out what we're going to do. But once again, we're going to be dealing with parking throughout the resort. This is not going to be probably the last parking garage that we're going to have to consider. And so if we can find a way, you know, to have income coming in, you know, for the garages, that helps us defer the costs. And then, but once again, once we get all that, then we can actually decide if we want to go to the Conservancy Group or the other things. But, you know, you know, but once again, this is a tough decision. And, you know, let's get the best possible result. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, Emily or Kathy, can you go back and show the cost for a park again? And just want to clarify, so council, the next time, we'll probably come forward to council, and we'll digest whatever dialogue council has at the retreat. Will probably be a presentation from Parks and Recreation to basically talk about what the design process could look like and then see if council wanted to authorize us with allocating funds towards initiating that design process. And design typically tends to be 10 to 15% of the construction cost. So ideally, if council wants to start right away or sooner than later, we're probably going to be looking for around $5 to $6 million to start that process. But no decisions are being made on that now. What I'm hearing is that we're going to move forward with trying to see what it looks like to do a design from a park perspective. And Parks and Rec will come and give you a briefing so you can have a further discussion and dialogue and provide direction there.
Is everybody on board with that? Okay, I think you got the thumbs up on that, Patrick. Kathy, thank you for your magnificent work.
Mr. Mayor, members of council at this time, Monica Crossky-Shapiro, Assistant City Manager, will come and give city council an update on the Virginia Aquariums and various different ownership models that are possibly out there in terms of how aquariums are managed and operated throughout the nation. And the goal with this is to get a discussion and dialogue from council in terms of if there's any next steps in terms of exploring opportunities.
Hi, Monica.
Hello. Hi, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor, members of council. I always like to start presentations off with recognizing my colleagues because I get the privilege of being here or tasked, depends on your perspective. But all of this really takes different talents and perspectives. Members of the Virginia Aquarium could not be here today because their leadership's meeting with a very important donor. But they were very instrumental in helping think through some of the options. Their passion and commitment to the animals that are under their care is just unparalleled. So I really appreciated their efforts. The budget team is always contributing to projects. Office of Performance and Accountability helped, as well as the City Attorney's Office with understanding the agreement that we have with the foundation. So the way that this presentation is structured is really giving you high-level context of the financials for the aquarium, as well as some history between the foundation, the aquarium, and responsibilities, then really diving into the requests that you all had. The original request was trying to understand the different models that peers use for ownership of aquariums as well as zoos, because they have very similar operation models. And then subsequent requests for what would a potential reduced scope look like came in. So we worked on that at the staff level. The approach used, and we'll talk some more about this as I get into the presentation, was to really look at zoos and aquariums that are accredited by the Association of Zoos and Aquariums because these folks meet high standards to make sure that they're meeting the same standard we meet to take care of our animals. And for the reduced scope, I'll have all sorts of disclaimers when we get to that slide, but we did that in-house. So with that, I'm just going to go ahead and get started. I like to start with the ask in mind, so as I'm going through the slides, you can kind of know what I'm setting you up to have a good discussion for. For us on staff, it's going to be helpful if you can give us some guidance as to whether, do you want us to proceed with the original scope? Look more into this reduced scope? Or potentially explore different ownership models? So that's going to be the final question that I have for you all. So just very quickly, understanding the Virginia Aquarium's structure. The foundation predates the opening of the aquarium, and that's pretty common when you look at zoos and foundations. They help do fundraising, help get the mission started before the facility actually opens. We have a pretty specific agreement that outlines our responsibilities. It's a five-year agreement renewal cycle. We've amended it several times. The current agreement ends in the spring of 2024. But at any time, either party can request to be released from the agreement by giving 90-day notice. The big takeaway from the agreement is that the aquarium, they own the animals. We own the exhibits, the tanks, the large infrastructure. The aquarium, they are, foundation, they are responsible for some of the decorative things that go into the exhibits. The way they explained it to me is, think about your tank growing up. You had like the plastic shrubbery in your aquarium tank, larger scale, but that's what the foundation provides. But we are responsible for the maintenance of the aquarium. Did want to provide some financials, just so that you have some contextual of what the asset is. This graph does a good example, a good job of just giving you the overall takeaway. Pre-the pandemic, pretty much to the plus side when it came to net income, about $2 million or so. Post-pandemic, they're still finding their way some. The FY23 numbers are not audited yet. The books aren't officially closed. And the FY24 number is really all budgeted. A couple of caveats for this, it does not include indirect costs. So if the aquarium was a standalone organization, they would need their own payroll system. They would need their own human resource management system. They don't have those costs because they're part of the city. So when you look at this net income, it's not including things like payroll system and IT system because those things are one of the benefits for being with the city. Another thing it does not include are the capital improvements. And we've done some pretty notable capital improvements. So you've probably heard about some capital needs that they have, but we did not want to leave the impression that we have been asleep at the wheel or we haven't been taking care of the aquarium. Both the foundation and the city have done pretty significant capital investments in the aquarium to the tune of almost $47 million recently. In addition, every single year, there's about $2 million as part of CIP that's going towards about four projects, I want to say, two projects, thanks, Kevin. In addition to some debt service that we pay on bonds for the aquarium, and that's about $4 million. None of those numbers are included in this net income. But really want to make sure it's a balanced discussion because oftentimes with these cultural assets, it's not just the direct income that they bring, but more of like the ripple effect. Not LJ's type of ripple effect, but the ripple effect of like the economy. And Sage, the Sage Group is a separate, independent group, and they estimate that it's about $257 million impact that having the aquarium in our community brings. So those are just some high-level financials want you to be aware of. Quickly, want to revisit the original scope that the Director of Aquarium, Cynthia, shared back in January. It's about a $200 to $287 million capital improvement project. These numbers were done by consultant engineers, architects, so really polished numbers. Just want to remind you of some of the things that this original scope gets us. Gets us a lot of the new things. Let's see, 25 new exhibits, over 2,100 square feet of new classrooms, 7,000 square feet of dedicated event space, four new galleries. And aquariums really measure themselves in size by gallons of water, similar to how someone might measure their house by square footage, it's really gallons of water. This would get us 78% more gallons of water. So pretty significant expansion and improvement that this gets you for that $207 and $287 million expansion. Now, something else that the aquarium and public works have had recent conversations about was really taking phase one, which is the parking garage, and potentially moving that to later, so that we get to the animals first. And that would reduce the cost by about $46 million to $62 million. They really want me to express to you that that's not a painless option, that that would create some parking challenges that we would have to work through, whether that's shuttling. But there would be some parking impacts, but that's one of the options that we want you all to be made aware of, that we could move phase one later, start with phase two as being the first phase. Also want to talk about some of the associated benefits with that original expansion. There's a pretty substantial projected revenue growth because they are projecting we will have more visitors because we're going to have new shiny, nice things, new exhibits. So they're estimating about 330,000 more visitors, more taxes being remitted through admissions tax, and a $300 million economic impact. This was a 10-year phased project that would avoid us having to close the aquarium, so not having to lose that annual economic impact, not having to worry about where we put our animals or staff. And the aquarium is confident that nonprofit and philanthropic support would be much higher when you're building things that are new or exciting or shiny. So they feel as though their ability or their success with getting private donations would be significantly higher under the original scope. But keep it in mind that there's an option of moving the former phase one to being later. So a reduced scope. Want to start with disclaiming, we did these numbers in-house as staff. So if this is something that you want to pursue more, really would feel more comfortable having experts, getting some money and having experts come in, look over our work, dust off some of our estimates. But essentially, looking at $128 billion renovation to some of our most dire needed areas of expansion. So this would get our sea turtles, our sharks, as well as the seals. This does include a holding facility for the seals. What we learned when we needed to do repairs at the start of the year is finding folks who are willing to take seals is tough. So we would need to build a facility to hold the seals while the renovations are being done. This would also tackle classrooms, admission spaces, things like that. It's not adding new square footage, it's just renovating what we have, bringing some of the exhibits up to code. And the water processing facility, obviously, it moves a lot of water. So whenever you hear me talk about filtration or water systems, it's really the heartbeat of the aquarium. But really want to talk about what it does not include. This figure does not include parking and some of our other older sections of the aquarium. And the aquarium staff really wanted to point out that the 1995 expansion is going to be needing some attention shortly. And this does not address that. Also, something that we need to take into consideration is what do we do with the animals? This will really require us to close the facility, looking at like a three-year period of closing it. So what will we do with our animals? So in one of our meetings, we had the chief veterinarian on and just talking about, one, if we're able to find someone who will foster our animals while we're going through this renovation, we have to ship them there, and how much will that cost? And some of the estimates were up to $1.5 million to get them there and then getting them back. They explained that it's not always, folks are going to give you back your animals. They might keep them permanently. So the foundation would need to raise money to reacquire animals.
Ransom money.
Another thing that they thought through, well, if we can't find anyone who's willing to take our animals, because again, back in the winter, they were looking for someone to take the seals for three months, and no one would. Some of the other options would be using our animal care center, where we go out and we rescue stranded animals. We would suspend that program, and we would house some of our animals there, about 60% there. Alternatively, which is probably much more aggressive, would be trying to find a place to build a temporary facility. $15 million, when you think about what it would need to be equipped with, and that's not including- to be equipped with, and that's not including land acquisition. So some other considerations with this one is that it does require closing the aquarium and losing that annual economic impact. And then we would need to think through of what would we do with our staff during this time. The aquarium staff also feel as though being able to get a lot of philanthropic support might be more challenging, because again, this is renovating, it's not necessarily getting us a more expansive, a lot of new things. So they're a little less optimistic, they're a lot less optimistic about the fundraising they would be able to do. Some things we did want to just be fully transparent on, there are some current maintenance needs that we have to do. Our filtration systems are beyond expected life and really can't let those, one, it already had a failure. I guess they each have two. So we're under the process of an RFP or procurement to replace some of the bio tower filtration system. And just overall, some of the larger exhibits are beyond their expected life. So there is a risk of failure, structural and mechanical. In one of our team meetings, the aquarium staff talked about the Berlin Aquarium. I'm not sure if you all are familiar, where there was like a structural failure and there's these, the tank burst essentially. So you have massive amounts of water, luckily, it was closed, massive amounts of water leaking, animals that need to be in water or on dry, just really dramatic. If you Google it, it comes up. So just want to make council aware of that. I felt like this slide was important, because I don't want this to get lost in translation. This council has always been pretty transparent and vocal that you all recognize that the aquarium is an asset to this community, educational, an economic asset, a cultural asset, is that sometimes there's more than one way to achieve a goal. So you all were interested in learning how do other communities that have this asset, how are they set up? So you all requested ownership models, information on ownership models. So researched ownership models, again, looked at 32 of the 57 aquariums that are in the US that are accredited by the Association of Zoos and Aquariums, and looked at 13 zoos, and really wanted to see what's their ownership model. And essentially, there are like four main types. There's nonprofit and government. There's a nonprofit standalone, and then there's nonprofit and what I'm calling a corporate entertainment entity, and then just a standalone corporate entertainment entity. And we'll get more into each of these over the next several slides. But you can see a good chunk of them are nonprofit plus government, Model A. But even within that model, there are variations, and I'll talk to you all about that. But what I found interesting in doing the research, that it's not uncommon for over the life of one of these institutions for them to change models. Like, some have started out as Model A, and now they're in Model C. Or some have started out as B, and now they're in Model A. So it's not uncommon for folks to, institutions to go have a change in ownership models. Don't expect you to be able to read this, but I just really wanted to hit home on that. So these are just some quotes taken from various websites and folks. You can see, I think it was Birmingham and Atlanta that really talked about having to compete with the city. Funding became more and more difficult of, one of the websites said, trying to compete against human needs was almost impossible. So their funding kept being decreased and decreased. So examples of councils leading privatization efforts, or an aquarium being acquired by a corporate entertainment entity, or a nonprofit, the Florida Aquarium sold their facility to the city of Tampa, and now they operate it. So just really want to hone in on the fact that just because something started out in a particular model doesn't mean that's where they are today. This is, and you also have handouts at your seats, this is an overview of where these institutions are today, and we will dive into them. But as you can see, the government, nonprofit combination is the most prevalent combination. So let's talk about that one. In this model, the roles and responsibilities differ. So some of them, the nonprofit operates the facility. So the employees are employees of that nonprofit. The city owns the land, or the city owns the building, but the employees, the financial responsibility is that of the nonprofit. Others, the nonprofit is more of a support. They support the mission, they do fundraising, but the government owns and operates it. So we'll dive, most of them are the nonprofit operates and the government simply owns. Didn't want this to be suspenseful, but if you're curious, this is where we are. We are the government operates, nonprofit supports. So as you can see, a lot of them are state. So if you look at North Carolina Aquariums, it's going to work North Carolina into this presentation somehow. The North Carolina Aquariums are state, they're part of the state government. Riverbank Zoo, which is in Columbia, South Carolina, is a special parks district. So they get a tax millage from Columbia and another county. But then the others, Los Angeles, Miami, and we are more of where the government operates, they're our employees, and the nonprofit support us. But most of them is the model under which the nonprofit operates, they're the nonprofit employees. That's really the most common one when you look at the government ones. So for example, the Florida Aquarium, they have a $40 million campaign for expansion right now, and the city of Tampa has given $500,000 to it. Or Shed Aquarium, Sheed Shed Aquarium, that's Chicago, the park district owns the land. And in Illinois, if you're on park district land, you get their version of like a corporate income tax. So they get that from the state as well as a small percentage from the park district itself. Yeah, I think that's all I wanted to say there. Or I did want to point out Seattle, because Seattle's on here. They have a $160 million expansion campaign right now, and their goal is at $80 million for private fundraising and $80 million from government. They've already raised $67 million for their private goal, and their government goal, they're at $57 million, and they've received funding from the federal government, state government, county, city, and the port of Seattle. But these folks don't necessarily all get recurring funds from government. And then you have the standalones. So Indianapolis and Phoenix very proudly note that they do not receive government funding. So these are folks who, the money they earn is how they operate. The South Carolina Aquarium, which is in Charleston, South Carolina, they're also a standalone, but it's interesting, because they've gotten like $5 million in federal money. Some of these are really heavy in research, more so than on like the educational aquarium visit side, and those tend to get a lot of federal dollars. This is an interesting combination, the nonprofit plus corporate entertainment entity. This is really, two of these three started out in that Model A of where they were government and nonprofit, but they were acquired by a corporate entertainment entity. And these are pretty sizable aquariums. So we are about 650,000 gallons of water. These are like 1 million to 2 million gallons of water aquariums. So Adventure Aquariums in Camden, New Jersey, Newport Aquarium, that's Kentucky, but really, sounds like it's Cincinnati, Patrick, like eight miles from Cincinnati or so. So these are pretty sizable ones that were acquired. Odyssey has always been a private So what's been interesting, I think I have it on another slide, is that when they were acquired, their foundation stayed intact to help support the mission. And I think I'll talk some more about that in a couple of slides. And then the final category is the corporate entertainment entity, where it's just the corporate entity on its own. And admittedly, these are kind of, these are on the smaller side, on the US side. So Ripley's Aquarium in Myrtle Beach is about 85,000 square feet. But these folks are no strangers to larger aquariums. So Ripley's Aquarium of Canada's 1.5 million gallons of water. So while their US footprint might be smaller abroad, they do engage in larger acquisitions and larger aquariums. So just some more observations on the corporate entertainment entity. Had the pleasure of speaking with some of these folks and trying to learn more about this model. Got to speak to some of their senior leadership for some of these companies and their C-suite, and really understand what they look at when they're thinking about acquiring a property or getting into aquarium business. And one of the things they look at is market, trying to see, have you really fully saturated your market? Is there opportunities to increase your number of visits? Location, do they have assets there already? If they don't, is it an area where they want to get into business? The size, there seems to be like a Goldilocks effect. There's something as too small and too large, and they look at that cost-benefit analysis to see the size. They really talked about deferred maintenance is not something that scares them. It's quite common in acquisitions. What they do is the financial model that they come up with takes the condition of the facility into consideration. Some other things about acquisitions is that, like I said earlier, foundation, there's instances of where the foundation partner remains intact and even receives a portion of the profit to go towards their mission. Instances and examples of where aquarium leadership has remained in place, and they are accustomed to a variety of structures. Obviously, they like when they own everything, when they buy folks out, and they own the land and the building, but they have models of where governments might own the asset and they operate it, all sorts of different models they're willing to do depending on the asset itself. Timeline for acquisitions have been anywhere from like six months of being able to get acquisitions done. I think that's all I want to say on that. I'm happy to go deeper. I feel like if you asked me or quizzed me about a zoo or aquarium in America, I could probably tell you how they started, who funds them. But really want to have some conversation with you all about which path do you want us to dig deeper in? Do you want us to go back to that original scope, look at moving the parking deck later? Do you want us to dig more into that reduced scope? Do you want us to explore a different ownership model altogether?
Thank you for the detailed report. Patrick?
Yes, may I before we can say, I do want to, how was that here?
Appetite, at least from the private sector on our aquarium, that was really expressed to us as well. So if it is that council wants to explore alternative models, there is a path for that, possibly via some kind of procurement process. If there's something that's desired by this body, for exploration at least.
Okay, Michael?
Mr. Faro. Thank you very much for really an incredible presentation and really thought-provoking and thorough. And I agree with your comments about the professionals who both run and manage and the volunteers who are involved with the aquarium. Their outstanding work to care for the animals, to welcome visitors, it's in a very special place. And so I also acknowledge that, and am very delighted that it's part of our Virginia Beach community. I do think we need to be realistic about what the options are. And if you recall, during the last presentation we received about the aquarium, and given the familiarity that I have with capital campaigns and cultural funding, both in the private philanthropy side and the government support side, I was challenged to process the level of the ask that appeared to be coming, somewhere around $200 to $400 million potentially. And that's in today's dollars. So when we get to that point, I don't know exactly what that ask would look like. And for me, that was challenging to absorb, because we had just come through a budget cycle. And as part of that budget cycle, we heard from people in the community who expressed concern about the affordability of our city, the impact of taxes. And as well, we heard about the competing needs for public investment with regard to rec centers, with regard to public infrastructure, with regard to public education. And so talking about hundreds of millions of dollars for the aquarium was challenging for me then and continues to be. So I want to talk about the comparison that you made with Seattle, because I did some quick research as we were, you were concluding your remarks. And you said they're doing a $160 million capital campaign. And I don't know what the comps are for the Seattle Aquarium versus Virginia Aquarium in terms of size and the scope of the project, but $160 million is a lot of money. But it's nowhere near what we were talking about in the original version. Seattle and Virginia Beach, or if you want to be more expansive, Seattle and Hampton Roads are very different places. For example, Seattle is the 15th largest, the Seattle, greater Seattle area is the 15th largest metro area in the country. Hampton Roads is 37. And that's a big if, because we are talking about including Newport News, the peninsula, areas that we know have geographical and transportation challenges to accessing the oceanfront area. Also, Seattle has 10 Fortune 500 companies. Virginia Beach has zero, Hampton Roads has two. One of them's on the peninsula. That's a stark comparison in terms of the capability of corporate and private philanthropy. We do have very generous individuals, and I respect those people, and I'm very grateful for them and their capability to participate in this type of thing, both individually and collective, you know, philanthropic individuals and corporate citizenship is very high. But I'm very concerned that it's nowhere near high enough to compare to Seattle, and they're still working to achieve just their 80. So I guess what I'm saying here is, I fully recognize the impact that the aquarium has, both on education, our understanding of the natural world, the tourism impact, the quality of life for the city. But I also understand in the scope of what we have to deal with as a body and as a community in terms of the existing needs in our community. Not sure where that scale of a funding structure fits in, which is why we're here today. And I think we really need to look at some, we need to explore, I think we need to explore both the reduced scope and the possibility of a different ownership model. Because I'm hearing residents say, we need better stormwater, we need better maintenance of our stormwater, we need refurbishing, renovation of rec centers, we need new schools. I rarely hear anyone say we need an aquarium or a different aquarium. However, we do need to maintain those exhibits and potentially, you know, create new ones. We certainly have an obligation. We made that commitment, the city made that commitment when the aquarium was created. But the point that I'm making is, we have to be very realistic about what's possible in Hampton Roads. And to that, and then I'll conclude my remarks, I would, if you don't mind, like to receive a copy of the economic impact study that is often referenced, and I'd like to know how that's formulated. I'll be very curious about that, because the revenue that is generated based on amusement and other sales taxes doesn't, I'm not saying that, I'm not questioning it, but I just would like to understand how those calculations were made. Thank you.
Barbara, and then Chris.
Just a couple of immediate thoughts, but a lot of what I need to know. Have we approached the foundation to know what they would prefer, or are we doing that as a part of this?
So this really was explored and see what's the art of possible, like the manager likes to say, because we really didn't, we don't know. But now that we've done a scan, I think it would be appropriate to see, to get their thoughts. But yeah, this is really presenting, this is what our peers do, who have this asset in their communities, and they get the benefits that we have. So it was an exploratory.
That would be a very important part of the consideration, as far as I'm concerned, is what about the foundation, because they're a partner with us. But also, I'm having trouble understanding why we could do the original scope without closing, but we would have to close with the reduced scope. It seems like it would be the other way around.
Yeah, so I have a similar, I had a similar question too. And as Cynthia explained it, is while we are building the reimagined spaces for the animals, they're in their old spaces. So you're playing almost like a shuffle game with them. As far as with the reduce, since it's a smaller footprint, there's no place to leave them, because we are simply bringing their current home up to standard. But in the more expansive one, they're in their current old home, and then they're going to transfer to the new home, and you're playing like this shuttle shuffle game.
I think closing the aquarium would be a major mistake. I think closing the aquarium would be a major mistake. I think we really need to do, try how we can do whatever we can do without closing it because, I mean, we just look at what happens with the pandemic when everything shuts down for a while, you're a long time getting back. So I would be wanting to know how we can do what we can do, still partnering with the foundation, not closing, but recognizing that that's a mighty big ask financially. How can we get there, I think would be the... And is this, is the aquarium a use that's eligible for tip fund money?
Mr. Mayor, remember that council determines who is eligible for tip fund money. So that's up to council. So it is if council says it is.
And then another thought that I have, of course, we're no longer the Virginia Beach Aquarium, we're the Virginia Aquarium. Does the fact that we're the Virginia Aquarium get us any state money?
Councilmember Henley, we are asking that question very profusely and often to our state delegation.
We're having lunch with them on Thursday.
Well, maybe we should have a big lunch with them.
Patrick, you have something else? And then Chris.
Mr. Mayor, I think, Ms. Henley, you hit it on the ball, the issue, and I think Cynthia mentioned this previously when we presented, the reduced scope closes the aquarium. And then in addition to sending the animals away and may possibly not getting the animals back, we'd have to have a conversation about what do we do with the staff. Last situation we were in like this was around the pandemic, right? And the pandemic, when the aquarium shuttered, we had a lot of federal dollars that came in to allow us to keep the staff paid, you know? If it shudders and it shuts down, council would have to have a decision. Do you cover those employees that you cover and that the aquarium cover with general fund dollars? You know, while we're not collecting any kind of revenue associated with it. So that one is a difficult one to swallow in addition to the original scope, which was a very large voluminous number, as Mr. Berluci mentioned as well.
Okay, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Monica, thank you for the presentation to your staff and to Cynthia and her entire organization. Thank you. Councilmember Berluci brought some really good points, and I wanted to ask, just add some comments, a couple of questions. Have we ever done, or in the past three years, have we done significant community engagement around what the public really wants? Because I've heard different individuals say, well, they talk to people in the community. As someone with young children, I've visited a lot of these aquariums, and there's nothing negative against ours. They're completely different experiences. Whether the public, whichever model their own, but we were, last year, we were in Gatlinburg, the Smoky Mountains, at the Ripley's. Completely different experience, fully invested, privately owned. So the first question is, have we, like we've done with Rudy Loop and other, have we done significant community engagement from the public around what they would like to see their aquariums?
Can I get a deferral in answering that? I want to check with the aquarium to get a...
Okay. And then, go ahead.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if we, the aquariums does do like customer service and satisfaction surveys, but I don't know if we've done anything specifically on this one. So this could be one of the direction that council give as part of this, is they could ask us to evaluate this with the public to get a sense of where they are, in addition to what Ms. Henley mentioned as well about engaging the foundation and get their thoughts on the process as well. So that could be a direction that council gives us.
Because it's, the aquarium's in the RASAP Plan, Resort Area Strategic Plan. I always hear of the economic impact, the benefits. Every time we're there, we have season passes prior to being on council and still do. I meet people from North Carolina, South Carolina, all types, all different times of the year. And Councilmember Berluci did bring up a great point about the economic impact. I'd love to see how we're calculating that across Neptune Festival, across this Atlantic Park, because we hear the economic impact, but I haven't really seen in-depth understanding of how we're calculating that for other projects. And when you bring in community engagement, you know, nothing against Atlantic Park, it's down the road. But when we look at public investment, if you could, Mr. Mayor, where are we at for public investment on Atlantic Park?
Looking at the budget director, I think probably about $150 million. What's that? $150 million.
$150 million. So if we were to go to the public and get their input, what do you prefer, the aquarium or a surf park? I'd be interested in that answer. And so I'm very concerned with, one of the challenges I think we have, and that's our prioritization of our efforts is, you know, what is the priority as it relates to the resort area, as it relates to the entire community? Because I know people from every district visit the aquarium. I'm not sure if people from every district go to some of the other things that we found an appetite to support. And so my direct questions would be, how many, if any, community input sessions have we had for what the public would like to see done to their aquarium? And then as we analyze their numbers for economic impact, if we can apply that across the board.
I'm not writing it down, but I'm going to go back and watch it. We'll answer all of your questions.
I would like to just point out that for the aquarium, the city didn't do the economic impact. It was a private entity. I don't think we have the resources internally to do economic impact for the aquarium. But there was a private study, and it will work to get a copy of that to the members of council.
We will. And Sage Group and the Regional Economist served on the group. So we'll be able to get that to you for sure.
Okay, Josh and then Worth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Shapiro. Appreciate the opportunity to have the conversation, like the councilmen before me and all of us, extremely supportive of the aquarium. It is a wonderful place to take your family, and all the folks that work for the aquarium as well are incredible in terms of the care and the level of service. I had a couple of questions about, like, the slides aren't numbered, but in terms of what a corporate entertainment entity might be looking at in terms of making an investment here or anywhere, some of the factors they'd consider, including rightsizing the venue for the market and given its location. And I'm wondering whether or not, we had a large figure, a large ask come at us in between $200 and $300 million. Is that a right-size outcome for our market? And regardless of the, I guess, the ownership options that exist out there, what's the most effective one of those in terms of, you know, I guess, cost avoidance for a locality like us, but also maximizing, you know, its own return and generating the number of visits, you know, that we've seen, certainly in our aquarium, but other successful ones? So I would wonder, I know they asked the consultant to give them the Rolls Royces, you know, in a sense, like in terms of the $300 million new aquarium, but what's actually the right one? And what's the right size for our market? And I, like Councilwoman Henley, don't want to close it. And I mean, that's an extremely difficult situation, obviously, for the employees. But I just, I'd need to know a little bit more. And like Councilmember Taylor, I think some public engagement and some conversation around this would be good.
Okay, Patrick.
To address Councilmember Schuman's question about which one's the best one in cost avoidance, I think obviously the one that would put like a nonprofit or a corporate entity to kind of take it over in terms of taking care of the future costs of expanding or the maintenance. The approach that, in the original scope that was presented by the aquarium, it was phased options, right? So it wasn't that council had to do all of that. Council could choose phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four, or just do phase two and not do phase three, four, or phase one, right? It was a myriad of different ways, and that could have hit the cost at different points as well, as to bring it back up on the board, you know?
Okay, Worth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Shapiro, for your excellent research and work and presentation, because I think this is a really important issue for our city right now. This is the third most visited tourist attraction in the state of Commonwealth of Virginia. Great for the city, the brand of Virginia Beach, great for our city and our region. And so we are where we are now with $200 to $300 million in requests to keep it, to maintain it. And I think in this, I also want to acknowledge the dedicated staff at this facility and the board of directors, Mrs. Spanoulis and the staff, many who've been there from day one, I believe. And the board also raises a lot of money, and Councilwoman Henley is right, they're our partner. So I think in this day and time, as we've said, with the needs around the city, with public schools, with parks and rec, flood mitigation, we have to explore and leverage everything we can. So my question, with all that being said, so we have $44 million in debt that we still owe as a city. And we also have $12.2 million in the next six years in CIP. So going forward, I don't know how that looks, how we deal with that, but that's, somebody's got to pay for that. I just, that has to be put into the equation as well.
Okay, anybody else? Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, so just trying to get a sense of what does council want us to do next? So I'm hearing that they definitely, I'm hearing that council wants us to have a conversation with the foundation to get a sense of their thoughts on this. Also, some kind of public engagement, community engagement campaign to get a sense of what the viewpoint is of the public. Is that, do you want those things before or after we, like a review or explore other models?
Yeah, I think it might be, you know, good to set, you know, the foundation of what, you know, the decision process going forward. I think what I'm hearing is that the reduced scope is not an option, is, you know, closing it and things of that nature. You know, I think that's a bad thing. But, you know, but the other thing is, I think, you know, going forward, you know, based on what I'm hearing, that looking for a different ownership model, you know, may be in our best risk, you know, in a lot of ways. So, you know, what about, you know, maybe even doing that concurrently with the input?
Okay, I could do that. So we'll do three things. Engage the foundation, work on some kind of public engagement campaign that'll be socialized with council before we move forward with it, and then explore if there's another alternative ownership model for consideration and exploration, not for action at this time.
Yeah, because once again, I think if you have a couple examples of ownership models that you can actually bring forward to the foundation to kind of test the temperature on that, may not be a bad idea.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, what about council discussion or initiatives at this point? Anybody? Nobody? Chris and then Barbara.
This is council comments as well?
Yeah.
Okay. So Thursday, had an opportunity to give remarks at the Bank On Hampton Roads Celebration. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the invitation. Bank On focuses on classroom instruction with coaching to help participants become financially empowered. And as we know, that's a significant life skill, and it was just inspiring to see individuals that started the program with zero in savings, and the Bank On board matches as they save. And so they started with 300 enrollees and only 66 people finished. And so that tells you the commitment that was there. So just to our young people and many other people in the community, it's a great program. It's free, and financial literacy is also a key component to success. Then I want to give a shout out to the entire Public Utilities, Public Works. I know we've had some challenges recently, but we had two issues in District 8, one on Kings Grant Road, where we had one of the trucks came through someone's yard, and the constituent didn't even reach out to me. I ran into him at Wawa. He said, I didn't reach out because staff was so responsive. They brought dirt out, fixed the issue. And so that tells you just the integrity of our staff. And then we had another issue with pickup yard debris. Once we got it to staff, it was a 24-hour turnaround. So although there are challenges, I just want to commend the men and women that are working every day in this heat, and they're very responsive into Patrick's team with Jonathan and RJ. They're just, they're rock stars, so thank you.
Oh, thank you very good. Patrick.
Mr. Mayor, and piggyback on what Mr. Taylor said, I think if you all read the paper this weekend, in the opinion section, they did commend Jonathan and RJ and LJ. A citizen just randomly commended them, called them out specifically for the work that they've done. So thank you for your leadership. Because I think a couple of years ago, council authorized me at my request that create the positions that we hire Jonathan and RJ in. And I think we've been paying off tremendously in our ability to communicate and respond to the constituent complaints and citizens' concerns. So thank you for your support on that.
That's great. Barbara?
I have two issues. The first one, we're hearing from the Open Space Committee that they would like to have some student members on the committee. And in order to do that, we have to pass a resolution to change the makeup of the committee and allow it. So what I would need to know is if there are three folks who would join me to have this on the agenda so we could...
Of course.
So the full council can ask to allow student members to be appointed to the Open Space Committee. I'd appreciate that. I'm going to pass around a page that I got out of, something that I was reviewing from our last retreat when I was preparing for the retreat next week. And it has to do with something that we were talking about last week. It's a drive time analysis from current recreation centers. At the retreat, we asked for this to be given to us so we could see about the rec centers and so forth. And so this is very timely, along with what we talked about last week. But there's something about this that really jumped out at me that probably the rest of you aren't having any problem with. The map. This doesn't include the whole city. It cuts off a very large part of District 2.
It sure does.
And this map has been used occasionally over time, and I can understand, it's a big city, but I hope with our district system, we won't see this map again.
You're absolutely correct. Councilmember Henley, I think you're absolutely correct. I think if you recall, this probably was done in like 2018 before I got here.
Patrick, you're good.
This was in the packet from our winter retreat. When you look at this, not only does it distort the issue, but it sort of sends a message that there are an awful lot of folks in the city that are important enough to be on the map. So we're going to deep-six this chart and never see it again, or this map.
Understood.
Not see it anymore. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Jen and then Michael.
Just a couple of updates. So MBC, at the meeting on Friday, staff liaison said that the city is putting out an RFP to update the disparity study. And so I think the, if I heard it correctly, September is when they're looking to sort of wrap it up and award proposals. So that's something that's coming up. And then some updates about funding for the VB Trail. So the Chair Walter Camp is here at the Active Transportation Advisory Committee. He provided some updates. So some of the leaders attended a training with VDOT, a virtual training, and in that meeting, they learned that $70 million in current state budget for trails are going to be awarded to the Big Five Trails prioritized by the General Assembly. And that changes the process where communities could compete for grants. So the ATAC has identified this as a setback for potential state funding for the VB Trail, another setback during that same virtual meeting. There are potential changes for the Smart Scale Grant Program, which is one of the two largest sources of state funding for bike and pedestrian projects. So if these changes are implemented, it could mean that roadwork is given priority over bike and pedestrian grants. So this could also be a setback for state funding for the VB Trail. So I know VB Trail is a, it's been something that's been identified as a longstanding priority for a number of council members, but also some constituent groups. And just wanted to make you all aware of this most recent conversation from VDOT as we think about completing the trail and finding funding sources for it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. My comments will be very brief. I just wanted to acknowledge that the Human Rights Commission held their annual retreat last week, where they set about not only, you know, building connections among the commissioners, but also developing a strategy for their work for the year. I appreciate Vice Mayor Wilson attending to offer remarks and support. And I know that Councilmember Ross Hammond made a... And I know that Councilmember Ross Hammond made a really valiant effort to join them, and you were there in spirit. But I know they appreciated you all being there and acknowledging the important work that they do. And there's a lot of opportunity as we move forward and envision a future for Virginia Beach to make sure that we're including the perspectives of everyone and treating everyone with dignity and respect as we do so. And so I appreciate the work they do and the support they receive from this body.
Mayor, go ahead.
I did do a visit with the people over at the soccer field and talk with the executive director and chair. And it was interesting to learn, you know, how much they do and the connection between the regular soccer and the sand soccer. How important. And I thought that maybe I could get a few of our council members to support them bringing a presentation so more people can learn, you know, about that sport and support. Because they do, they will need more support for getting new turf and so forth. But I thought it would be good to present it so that way we can see what the needs are not and discuss it. So if anybody interested in being a part. Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I will too.
Okay, so I have Rosemary, Michael, and Josh. And, oh.
And put me down there.
Yeah, and if you're aware, we lost someone this weekend. Well, two people. One, Bart Frye. You know, he was with the Agriculture Advisory Commission in the Frye Properties. So that's one person. And a big loss. So I wanted to mention that. And I guess his funeral is right around the corner. If it's not happening, this, one person and the others lost. And even though it's from the Hampton Roads, is Schmidt, the young man from HRO?
Missy.
Missy, who's the chair, his wife suddenly passed. So those people impact, you know, us in Hampton Roads many ways. I just wanted to mention, and may their souls rest in peace. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yep, Sabrina?
This is still comments?
Yes.
Comments? Really briefly, I'd like to just let the public know I'll be out in the community on this Friday. From 10, about 10 o'clock, doing a walkthrough with Public Safely with the police department. As some of you know, maybe a couple of weeks ago, we received a report of an officer being injured in a car, in a shooting, as it relates to an auto theft. And he was not injured, however, it was certainly alarming for the Level Green community. And when I talk with the police officer and the precinct captains in that area, Level Green is unfortunately a hotspot for crime. You see quite a bit of youth violence, done violence as well in that neighborhood. And so I'll be out walking the community, talking to the residents. But it is also a clear indication to me that that community, along with District 7, needs something for young folks to do. There's not a recreation center there, there are not very many activities. And when I talk to the representatives and residents, that is something that they bring to my attention. Ms. Wooton, these young folks don't have anything to do. And so that really drives the motivation and the passion to make sure our youth in that community and in District 7 have something to do to deter them from crime. And as you know, statistics state that recreation centers are very crucial in eliminating, or at least deterring, that kind of activity in communities. The other event I would like, or event I would like to bring to your attention is on Saturday, the 19th, this week. As many of you know, August is National Black Business Month. And so in an effort to celebrate businesses, local businesses as well, I'm hosting an Ignite Business Expo on Saturday from 8:30 to 2 o'clock at the Virginia Beach Convention Center. And it will include two very important forums. One will be for businesses. And we will have folks like Dan Bannister with Nissan Automotive who will be there talking about, under the umbrella of, in the title, Doing Business Beyond the Pandemic. We'll also have Virginia Wesley in there. And they will talk about some of the programs that are available to businesses, local businesses, to continue to help them as we come out of the pandemic, to let them know what's available, to continue to help them grow and thrive, our local businesses. And we'll also have a conversation, it will be an entertainment forum, the State of Entertainment in Hampton Roads. We'll have speakers and panelists like Mr. Robbie Wells, the executive director of Something in the Water. He will be there, Delegate Jackie Glass, among others. And we'll talk about entertainment in Hampton Roads and in Virginia Beach to see how entertainment can be another economic arm in this area. So that will be a very important discussion that we will have during that expo. So two very important forums we'd like the public to come out to. We'll also certainly be highlighting and accepting supplies, school supplies for our local schools as well. So please come out. It's free, again, from 8:30 to 2 o'clock PM at the Virginia Beach Convention Center. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yep, Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank the folks who came out to one of two listing sessions that we scheduled in District 9 this past Saturday. Some small group discussions around kind of big picture priorities and then district level priorities. We're going to have another one this Saturday at Bayside Rec Center from 5:30 to 7:00. So if anybody in District 9 or anywhere else for that matter wants to join us, we'd love to have you. And then just briefly, I want to touch on something that Brad Martin mentioned during his, the annual report that he gave for Process Improvement Steering Committee. As you all know, I've been kind of working on this idea of a stormwater task force. And really, it's just an opportunity, not for a rewrite by any means, just trying to look at some of the policy objectives that we have, like affordable housing, land use priorities, making sure we're building things in areas where we have infrastructure in place to support the growth, instead of pushing into environmentally sensitive or flood-prone areas. And I have a draft resolution that I'm not really ready to present because I haven't really, you know, we haven't talked about it. And I want to, I want to have that opportunity. I've talked with some of you about it. But really, it focuses on community engagement, for sure, because it will, it suggests or requires that we kind of coalesce around our city's various drainage basins. Multiple council members maybe come together and recommend somebody to represent your drainage basin. It will hopefully rely on some, you know, industry expertise, as well as environmental lawyer or land use attorney or engineer. You know, those kinds of things, to just get some people in a room talking about these issues. I know we had a trail that, you know, couldn't get built because we had to knock down a bunch of trees in order to do it. Things like that where, you know, we, we might be able to look at things a little bit differently. So I just wanted to preface that for those of you who have not been able to reach with this. I intend to do so. I will leave a copy of this with the clerk so that it's included with, you know, with what we show online, so that if the public wants to take a look at it. And I'm looking at LJ, and I'd love to show you this too, so we can talk about it. But just eyes wide open and certainly, again, not a rewrite, but really just an opportunity for us to kind of come together with some subject matter experts and find some ways where we can have some policy wins. But also be mindful of the importance of stormwater and flooding remaining priorities. So, thank you.
Hey, thanks. Anyone else? Worth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be quick. I just want to do a huge thank you to Public Works representatives for District 6. Last Thursday, we had our community meeting at Beach Middle School. Six members of Public Works came and attended and presented on a number of topics, repelled it with a lot of good questions. The same with members of our planning staff in terms of short-term rentals and home shares, as well as Captain Harry McBrien from the second precinct. So staff continues to really outshine and outdo themselves. Public engagement really is important. I think the public really was engaged. I was engaged with this public last Thursday night, so thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, just a couple of quick things. Today, there was a very favorable article in the Pilot about the Bo Creek Project. Michael and I, a group of us, were there for the dedication. And they highlighted that this was a result of the bottom referendum that we did. And they talked about how magnificent this structure is going to be, where we took a prior golf course and not only for stormwater to impact a greatly, you know, neighborhood that was impacted, but also create an amenity and a go-to destination as far as parks and recs. So, you know, Michael was there. Did you have any comments on, you know, the dedication or anything that we did?
Bo Creek Stormwater Project is really one of the most important things that I think this body has done in the last decade. And it was the result of the terrible tragedy that occurred in 2016 in Hurricane Matthew that disproportionately impacted the residents of District 3. And we learned what the consequences are of failure to adequately maintain stormwater systems and to anticipate changes in stormwater recurrent flooding and the results of climate change and other environmental impacts. What we learned was neighborhoods can be effectively destroyed, people's lives can be interrupted, property is destroyed, and communities are traumatized and terrorized by the impact of flooding. And that happened right here in our hometown of Virginia Beach. And the result, though, the silver lining, the good thing, was how the Civic League, neighbors, citizens came together, not only to help each other through that tragedy, but to advocate for flood control solutions, to ensure that families in the future will never have to endure what families had to endure in 2016. And with the robust community engagement strategy, with professional support from engineers and people who are for the city and were contracted by the city, we've, as you know, envisioned, designed, and funded a vast flood control program that includes improved infrastructure, improved maintenance, and as well, improved storage, which is really what the Bo Creek Stormwater Park is about. The result of all of these systems working together will ensure that people's homes are dry, their property is preserved, and we can go about life as we intended to. And our neighborhoods are protected and quality of life is maintained in Virginia Beach. It's a very exciting project. It's a very expensive project that the residents of the city invested in. Sorry, I'm going long on this, Mayor, but you invited it because it's such an important topic. And I appreciate it.
The project's going to take 10 years.
The project's going to take... I think it's seven. Maybe by the time I'm finished describing its impact... But that's, but that's really what it's about, man. I appreciate you, I appreciate you elevating it. And it was a very special moment, it was a very hot day, but it was a very special moment.
Oh, great. And, you know, but Michael, thank you for your diligence and, you know, really fighting for your district. I had a couple of very positive comments. They heard a presentation by Chief Nutigate about the crime statistics. And we are trending positive in a very, very, very special way. Everything we have to note. And then finally, I told Amanda, it's okay, our retreat will be live streamed. You know, during our retreat, it will be available to the public on live stream. Okay? Okay, thank you. And I think it's now for agenda review. And we're headed to schedule here, my goodness.
So there's only one speaker. Do we want to do the one-speaker policy? Or what do you want to do, Amanda?
Yeah, what, let's pull up?
Two.
Okay. And the others, there's no one speakers?
Number three?
Any discussion around that?
Speaker, what did you say about three?
There's no speaker, but I had some comments.
Okay, you want to poll?
Yes.
Okay.
Number four?
Four?
Yes, ma'am. And then number six?
Anybody else in ordinances?
Well, I have a question for Councilman Taylor on number four. There are, we were anticipating it may go on consent. So there are speakers from the community who would like to come to offer support. Should I tell them to come?
Absolutely. If they want to, yeah. I think it's important.
Okay. Any others to poll?
Moving on to planning. Number one, the city of Virginia Beach, District 6.
Consent?
Number two, Alexandra Page Pope, District 6.
Consent? Please?
Number three, Winners Properties, District 4.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Number five, First Class Event Rentals LLC, District 4. Number five, Milestone Tower. I attended the one community meeting and there were five people there and haven't heard anything from anyone since, so down with consent. Move over there. Six, Bo Browns LLC, Willis Realty Group, District 8.
Consent.
District 7, Ascension Group LLC, George and Joan, Giorgio.
I will be moving to deny, so not consent or discussion?
We have consent for deny?
I don't know how that works.
Pardon me?
I don't know how that works. We can agree to deny.
Well, is the applicant, is...
Yeah, we, I think we need to pull that down.
Okay, we should pull it.
Okay, number eight. Eight and nine are asking for deferral till September 19th. Is that okay?
So that would go on to, on consent for deferment?
Consent for defer.
That's it, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, the Chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.23711A. For Virginia, it's amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property, discussions or considerations of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in an open meeting would affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A3. And the first one is Districts 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, and 9. Then we got a District 5, a District 6, a District 4, a District 6, a District 3. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.33711A8, election system and sports center. And then legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to the actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2... of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A7, and that is Kowalowicz versus City of Virginia Beach. And then finally, personnel matters, discussions, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the public body pursuant to 2.23711A1. Council appointments, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
Okay.
Councilman Zalucchi?
Councilman Malachi?
Aye.
Councilman Menelie?
Aye.
Councilman O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilman Orenick?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Ralph?
Aye.
Councilman Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilman Taylor?
Aye.
Councilman Wooton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wilson?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are recessed into executive.